The board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Trup, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Triplet, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen. Seventeen present.
Quorum being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries who's able to rise to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. I also ask that as we go through our weeks, you know, the days this weekend and next week, we keep in our prayers Reverend Earl Nance, who had a heart attack, and just pray for his speedy recovery. We will dispense with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, move for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar, second about Alderman from the twentieth, Alderwoman from the fifteenth, and Alderman from the ninth, would you like to proceed to the dice?
And Alderwoman Florida is going to read this resolution, and the only thing that I can say is wow, what this lady has accomplished in the thirty-eight years that she's been with the city of St. Louis. So we'll do this part of it first, and then we can talk bad about her.
Whereas, we have been apprised that after thirty-eight years of committed service to the city of St. Louis, Lieutenant Colonel Antoinette Villa, Deputy Chief Commander of the Bureau of Criminal Investigation and Support is retiring. Whereas Lieutenant Colonel Antoinette Villa joined the Metropolitan Police Department on September twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-three, as a civilian clerk. On March eighteenth, nineteen seventy-four, she was sworn in as a commissioned police officer. Lieutenant Colonel Villa began her career as a police officer in the Mobile Reserve Unit and Eighth District. Whereas in January of nineteen eighty-four, Lieutenant Colonel Villa was promoted to the rank of sergeant. As a sergeant, she served in the Third District Juvenile Division and in sex crimes and child abuse. Whereas Lieutenant Colonel Villa became the first female in the history of the department to serve as a lieutenant when she was promoted to the rank in June of nineteen eighty-seven. Lieutenant Colonel Villa served in the North District for five years following her promotion. She also worked in the Traffic Safety Unit, and whereas continuing the trend of being the first female to break several department barriers, Lieutenant Colonel Villa was promoted to the rank of captain in October of nineteen ninety-three. Lieutenant Colonel Villa served as a captain for fourteen years in a variety of command positions, including commander of the First and Eighth Districts and Internal Affairs. Whereas a captain, Lieutenant Colonel Villa was assigned to the position of secretary to the Board of Police Commissioners from November of two thousand three to July of two thousand five. She also served as a commander of the Fourth District during her time as captain. Whereas in February of two thousand seven, Lieutenant Colonel Villa was promoted to the rank of major. She served as the Assistant Chief of Detectives in the Bureau of Criminal Investigations and commander of the South Patrol Division, and whereas Lieutenant Colonel Villa served as a commander of the Bureau of Community Policing from January of two thousand nine until assuming her current position in March of two thousand eleven. Whereas through her distinguished career as the department colonel, Lieutenant Colonel Villa has received eight chief's letters of commendation honoring her skilled work in law enforcement. Whereas Lieutenant Colonel Villa earned a Masters of Science in Justice Administration from Lindenwood University and a Bachelor of Justice Administration from Tarkio College, she is also a graduate of the FBI National Academy. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to congratulate Lieutenant Colonel Antoinette Villa for thirty-eight years of dedicated service to the city of St. Louis, and we wish her peace and happiness in her retirement, and we direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings. Thank you, Tony. You have blazed a trail. And I had the privilege of having Tony as a captain, and there is no other police officer who is as dedicated to community-based policing. And quite frankly, I'm really sad that she's retiring because I'd like to see her end her career right here as police chief, so thank you.
You know, I don't think there's a bad thing that you could say about Lieutenant Colonel Villa. And she doesn't like Antoinette, well, I guess she does, that's her name, but she likes to be called Tony. And I was fortunate, ten years ago in redistricting, when I acquired some of First District, she got transferred down to First District, and that's the first time that I really got to work with her as a captain. And I just want to point out one of the, you know, I think fantastic things that she did, because if you look at her career, most of it was in North St. Louis. But when she came down to First District, she started some meetings between her districts where she worked up in North St. Louis and First District, and we'd meet up at the district in North St. Louis, and then we'd come down and meet at St. Anthony's in South St. Louis. And I think, you know, what, really, you'd have to ask her to see what she was really trying to accomplish, but I think one of the points that she was trying to accomplish is that people, no matter what race you are, we all have the same problems. And as we all sat down and became friends, that's what we kind of figured out. And then she started the food, where we'd have food at these meetings. And then as she transferred out, the meetings, you know, kind of fell off. But I think, you know, that I would like to see more of that, because we get to meet people from other neighborhoods. And it was just, I think, mission accomplished with the time that she was there. And here's, you know, a police captain at this time, you know, that organized this, and it really helped in communications and seeing the problems of, you know, of all of our neighborhoods. Actually, we all have the same problems throughout the whole city. So, but I think that's, it's not in the resolution, but it's something that I'll never forget, and I'll never forget, meeting the people and going up to the, that was the North Patrol District, you know, and what room was it? I don't want to say the back room, but the conference room.
Conference room.
Yeah, and having these meetings. It was really a lot of fun and very educational. You know, what she's accomplished, you know, it's the steps to follow. I mean, I think for women, you know, she's done some just hellacious accomplishments here. And I think a lot of us would have liked to seen her, you know, stay long enough to get into that chief spot, you know, but we've got a chief. And right now, what I'm going to do is, if it's okay with the President, turn it over to the chief and let him say, you know, a few words too. And Chief Isom, I'm glad you're here, and you're on. Before we let Tony, so.
Well, I'd like to echo those sentiments. Sometimes I would like Tony to be chief as well. She would do a great job. But on behalf of the St. Louis Police Department, I want to say job well done to Colonel Villa. She's done an outstanding job over the last thirty-eight years. One thing that's not reflected in the resolution is her integrity. Having been a person who worked for her in Internal Affairs, worked with her, and was a part of many of her first, being the first Lieutenant Colonel, being the first to be of the Bureau of Community Policing, being the first to be over the Bureau of Criminal Investigation, I can say that she has the highest integrity that you can have as a police officer. And that's really what's important to our job, when you come to work every day trying to do the right thing for the right reasons at the right time. And that's the example that she sets for our organization, so I want to thank her for that. And that is what we're about as police officers, providing that legitimacy to the community. So thank you. I hope you have a wonderful retirement, and you're able to spend a lot of time in Florida on the beach. So thank you.
Alderman from the twentieth, you want to, Alderwoman from the sixteenth? She sat down, she yielded, but she's back up, let's take her. Alderwoman from the sixteenth, ladies first.
Okay. Thank you very much. I just, I was very, you know, sad to hear that she was retiring, but I have to tell you all that I have a special place for Tony in my heart, because she's a mother as well. And when I met Tony, that's right, when I met her, we were at an event, and it was running late, and I said to her, oh my gosh, I'm going to be late picking my children up from school and have to do that walk of shame as my children are all out, because their mother didn't get there in time. And Tony got me back to the school in time for my children, so I so appreciate you knowing how it feels as a mom. All the other things are fantastic, but you've been a great mom too, and you've been a great friend, and good luck.
Alderman from the twentieth.
You know, we always read about these great trailblazers and things like that, but what we don't really recognize often is that they're real people and that they're flesh and blood and have the same emotions and concerns that all of us do. I always think of her as Captain Villa. I know she's a colonel, and I have to always respect that and honor that, and I do. But I think of her as Captain Villa, I don't think of her as Tony. The major question that we always have to define in St. Louis is where you went to high school, and it was St. Anthony's High School, so that's out there. And of course, what she learned in the academy was so very important, but as a person, as somebody who has the intestinal fortitude and the integrity that the chief talked about, obviously she learned that from her beginnings and her childhood and her upbringing here in the city of St. Louis. And I always understood that she understood, like Alderwoman Behringer said, what it was like to really be here, living in the city of St. Louis, and I don't think that she ever lost that. The First District has a rich tradition of great leadership, and I probably will mess up some of this. I think, wasn't camp down there at one time? I can't remember. There was a guy who always had the signs that would say you couldn't park, and I can't even remember his name anymore. But there was, Colonel Reagan was down there for a long stint, Captain Villa, Miller, Spies, and now Captain Howard. And there's been a lot of great leadership. Lieutenant Colonel Jockem Stoller was in the South Patrol Division, and I know from a very practical standpoint, I'm going to miss your departure, not only because you're a great person, and because you've provided great leadership in one of the best police departments in the country, but the fact that when I had situations, and they come up from time to time, when I feared for someone's life, that I was able to go to you, and I've gone to others, but specifically you, and I want to thank you for that. And those kind of circumstances do come up when the police department has to recognize that there's something that's very volatile in a community. I remember a few times, one of which Alderman Ortman already talked about, and that was bringing together the Eighth and First Districts in a very tangible way with real people understanding each other. And so often, I talk about, and you practice, the fact that people learn to trust one another, they learn to be in those trenches together in a fun way, learning that they're true people, and then they start relying on each other and other things, and not seeing everybody else is somehow different, or that somehow they can't work together because they're working together. And you did that, so thank you for that. I remember when I was, as part of redistricting, and I know Alderman Ortman already reflected on that a little bit, I was in the rectory of St. Ambrose Church, because that's where I was assigned as an alderman to the Tenth Ward. And Monsignor Bomarito and others were talking about this film that was going to be filmed, and a large part of it was going to happen at Marquette Park. And I said, for God's sake, is anybody telling the residents around there that they're not going to be able to park, that they're going to be blocked off from their homes, and dah 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 dah? So the first person I contacted, obviously, was the captain, Captain Villa. And she worked together with others, with myself, with the people who were coming in, and all the residents, to try to make sure that that went as smoothly as possible. I remember specifically, I don't know if you remember this, when we had what I thought could have been a volatile situation with a resident close to Marquette Park who had been doing some things there with good intentions, but it was creating some real disruption. And you sat down, and I sat down with you, but you specifically with this person, on the limestone stones there at the tennis courts, and we talked through, sometimes not very happily, but we talked through all of that. And had you not taken that time, and sometimes, I know all captains are busy, but taking that time put something to rest that could have taken a lot of police time and a lot of neighborhood upset, so I appreciate that again. So the time has come, and you're leaving us, and I'm not happy about that. But I am, but I am happy for you, and your involvement in the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department has made it better, and there will be others whose lives you have touched who will also make this department better. And we thank the chief and the colonels and all the people with whom you've worked over all these years, as well as yourself, for what you have contributed to the city of St. Louis and to the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department, and I personally thank you.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
I don't know Tony very well, but I would just like to recognize her as a trailblazer in the department, and one that has paved the way for other women to achieve, hopefully as well as you have. And if my gut is right, I got a feeling that Tony won't be too far away. We'll see her around, and she'll be doing other great things. Somebody that achieves that much is not one to go away and just hang it all up. But I wish you Godspeed and enjoy your retirement, and we hope to see you back in some other capacity. Thank you so much for your years of service.
You're looking good, by the way, Alderwoman from the fourteenth. Glad to see you back. Let's give her a round of applause. Alderman from the fourth.
Good morning, Mr. President. I rise in support of Captain Villa. When I first got in office, she was, I think she was one of the captains. She was my captain when we first got in. The Fourth Ward has had about six captains. I don't know if we run them out, or what's going on over in the fourth, but we've had about six captains. And when I got in, being the old male showman this I am, I didn't think that a lady was capable of handling the type of crime that we had in the Fourth Ward, but believe me, to the rest of you chauvinists, she's not soft on crime. And we appreciate you and what you've done and the accomplishments you've made in the police department. And I also thought that they were priming you to be the first female chief, so I don't know what happened to that. I guess Colonel Isom fixed that up real well. We're just proud of you, and we hope that you have, and whatever your endeavors are, we will be looking forward to assisting you in whatever you're doing outside being a police captain, and I will miss you, Colonel. Thank you.
Alderman from the thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I too rise to congratulate Lieutenant Colonel Villa and wish her the best in the future. I have known her, I think, longer than any other alderman. We were both kids down at Marquette Park a few years ago. I was an older kid, but we've known each other a long time, and she did a great job coming down to the First District. And again, I just thank you for all your years of service, and Chief, I'm glad you're here. I want to thank you. You do a terrific job, doing a great job, and you have certainly have our full support. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to thank Lieutenant Colonel Villa for taking the time to stop your car and talk to me when I was out raking leaves, because the neighbors always thought they finally got me. You've always been approachable, accessible, professional. You've been a credit to the uniform, a credit to the St. Louis Police Department, and more importantly, a wonderful representative for our city. Godspeed.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I'd like to also, before we turn it back over to Alderwoman from the fifteenth and Alderman from the ninth, just also add my thanks, you know, as a father, as a husband, as an elected official, and a resident of the city of St. Louis, I indeed thank you for your many years of service. You know, when we come to do what we do here every Friday, and we do our stuff throughout our community, we can do it with a reasonable assurance that we will return at the end of the evening. But some of the folks behind me, especially Lieutenant Colonel Antoinette Tony Villa, they had to raise a family and still not understand if they're going to come home safely at the end of the evening. And they did that to be able to provide a safe and secure city for all of us to live in, so that we can raise our families. So I cannot thank you enough for what you've done. I certainly hope you enjoy your retirement and to your family. I know you have at least one daughter here, or these two daughters here. You know, we thank you for, you know, what you've done in, you know, understanding that when your mother is out during the day doing her work, you had to be strong and support her. So Lieutenant Colonel, I cannot thank you enough, but congratulations on your retirement. And I'm like Craig, and also Ken, I want you to retire, and I want to say enjoy it. I guess I'll just have to say enjoy your retirement, but remember, the door is always open for you to come back.
Thank you for this very humbling honor. I'd like to introduce some of my family that came today. Some are out of town and some others out of work. So my oldest daughter, Kim Weber. My other daughter, Tina Roth. And my sister, who some of you already know, she's an educator, was with the Board of Education in the city of St. Louis for thirty-something years.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, now works in Melville. Beverly Frazier. Thanks for coming today. And I see some friends out in the audience, too, that I used to work with. So Greg Simons and Linda Poor. They were instrumental in getting me through the day every day at work. So I just want to thank everybody. I've enjoyed working with everyone over the years. We've built some wonderful partnerships and friendships, and I think the reason that those friendships and partnerships developed is because we all had the same goal. And that goal was to stabilize our neighborhoods and to make this city safe for all of our citizens. So I thank you for all your support over the years. I'm going to miss everybody, I'm going to miss the job, but everything comes to an end, so we have to move on. So thank you for your support, and I really appreciate and I'm grateful for this recognition. Thank you.
Before we give her this, if I had one wish, and I want to go back, you know, probably more than ten years, I wish that every captain and lieutenant would be as accessible and available as back then Captain Villa was. And Alderman Villa, she didn't have her hand on her cuffs, did she? So Jen and I are going to present her with this resolution, and major accomplishment, this was embanked before we got it here to the floor, so we don't have to make a motion to embank it. So here we go.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries, return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the twenty-third.
I'd like to have as my honored guest Celeste Reader from the Realtors.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Introduce as my honored guest Gary Otten from the Painters District Council Two, and my husband Larry Howard, who's with me today, and also serving as my driver.
Excellent. Alderwoman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guests today David Holmes with the Plumbers and Pipefitters, and Anthony Lancia with the Associated General Contractors.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, anything to wrap us up?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have no guests today. This being January thirteenth, my special guest, Mr. Stevens, is enjoying the accoutrements of what this day is. This is National Rubber Ducky Day. He's home having fun with his rubber ducky. Thank you.
Probably also knew it was Friday the thirteenth, so he decided not to come. We will dispense with line item number five. Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda, and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes. We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off any of our formal calendars? We dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill two forty-six, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, an ordinance pertaining to commercial semi-trailer trucks prohibiting such traffic during certain hours along McCoslin from the north boundary of southwest to the south boundary of Wise, exempting from the said prohibition emergency vehicles, including privately-owned tow trucks when providing emergency service to non-commercial vehicles and vehicles with gross vehicle weight of less than twenty-six thousand pounds and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty, two forty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Conway, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to submit all necessary applications to enter into agreement with the St. Louis Effort for AIDS or any other agency for the AIDS United Access to the St. Louis Effort for AIDS or any other agency for the AIDS United Access to Care Social Innovation Fund and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two forty-eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel in the fourteen-foot wide north-south alley in City Block eight oh-two as bounded by Shenandoah, Thirteenth Street, Lamai, and Interstate fifty-five. Board Bill two forty-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruisin, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on the westernmost one-hundred-foot portion of the fifteen-through-front-twenty-foot-wide east-west alley in City Block forty-nine-oh-six-A as bounded by Waterman, Lake, Portland Place, and Union, and also known as Portland Court. Board Bill two fifty, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel in the remaining fifteen-foot-wide east-west alley and the twenty-two-foot-wide north-south alley in City Block eight ninety-six bounded by Olive, Eighteenth Street, Pine, and Nineteenth Street. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bills two forty-six, two forty-eight, two forty-nine, and two fifty. To the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill two forty-seven. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill two twenty-eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplett, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a transportation project agreement between the city and twenty-one-eighteen Shoto Transportation Development District containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
We dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent calendar.
Board Bill two twenty-five, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service establishing a public works and improvement project for the design and construction of the Traffic Management Enhancement Project involving various traffic management improvements on the city arterials and the city's Traffic Operations Center computer systems containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill two thirty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commission to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the twenty, twelve-hundred block of Claridan as Reverend John Watson Senior Avenue. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. We dispense with line item sixteen, third reading, consent.
Board Bills two oh-one, sixty-nine, one eighty-two, two twenty, and two twenty-seven.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the third reading, consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Alderman Tru. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Triplett. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmid. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cone. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruisin. President Reed. Alderman Ortman. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone. Twenty-five aye votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion. Now, Alderman from the thirteenth, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. We will dispense with line item eighteen, report of enrollment.
Board Bills two oh-one, sixty-nine, one eighty-two, two twenty, and two twenty-seven.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session fix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law.
Resolution two, two eighty-eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruisin, the Board of Alderman approves the Cathedral Square Special Business District Budget.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you rec, recognize on the first reading of resolution number two eighty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I request unanimous consent for Resolution two eighty-eight.
Here are no objections. Please proceed, Alderwoman.
Uh, Resolution two eighty-eight is the adoption of the Cathedral Square Special Business District Budget for two thousand and twelve, and I move for adoption.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, second by Alderman from the ninth. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution number two eighty-eight. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution two eighty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, the Board of Alderman supports the Community Action Agency of St. Louis County and its City Services Division in its efforts to become the eligible entity, Community Action Agency for the city of St. Louis, and receive CSBG funding to provide services to city residents.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you recognize on the resolution, first reading of resolution number two eighty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move Resolution two eighty-nine to the, uh, Legislation Committee, please.
It's moved by Alderman from the twenty-sixth, second by Alderman from the eighteenth. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we send Resolution number two eighty-nine to Legislation. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution number two eighty-nine to the legislation committee.
So noted. That's the extent of our first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
Resolution two seventy-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruisin and President Reed, the Board of Alderman notes that the Assessment and Equalization Maintenance Plan prepar, prepared by the assessor is hereby approved as required by law.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on the second reading of Resolution number two seventy-six.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of Resolution two seventy-six.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-eighth, second by Alderman from the twentieth. Alderman from the twenty-eighth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution two seventy-six is the adoption of the reassessment plan by the assessor's office as required by state law. We, uh, heard that resolution in committee this week, had a good discussion with the assessor about the plans. Uh, this is a plan that we adopt every other year before the assessments happen. I think, uh, I think we all learned something in, in having this discussion in the Ways and Means Committee meeting, and so, um, I'm glad that we, we sent it there last week, and I think it came out unanimously, so, um, hopefully we can pass it out today.
All right, excellent. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution number two seventy-six. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of second reading of resolutions.
Mr. Lanza, unfinished business.
We have none. Monday, January the sixteenth, the office will be closed, the Martin Luther King Holiday. Wednesday, Housing and Urban Development Committee meeting, ten a.m. in room two oh-eight, the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to, uh, wish our Alderman from the twenty-second ward, our colleague, a happy birthday, and also Joe Valmer, a happy birthday today, Friday the thirteenth. Thank you.
Happy birthday, though. Alderman from the third.
President, members of the board, I have been selected to receive the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Non-Violence St. Louis Support Group Award on Sunday, January the fifteenth, from three to five p.m. at St. Louis Community College, Harris Center, thirty-one forty Cass Avenue. Thank you. Also, on Monday, the sixteenth, Martin Luther King Day at the Old Courthouse, I have also been selected to sing two songs for that Martin Luther King celebration. So if you want to hear this melodious voice, please come and celebrate Martin Luther King Day with us. I'll get deeper if you come to hear me sing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ald, Alderman from the third.
Ten a.m.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to announce a Streets meeting Thursday, eleven o'clock.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the thirteen, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, ten a.m., January twentieth.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the thirteen, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, ten a.m., January twentieth.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the eleventh. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, we stand adjourned.